Okay, it is six o'clock on February 20th, 2020. I'm going to go ahead and start the Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting. The first up is the easement for Finley Hill.
You gotta do the...
Oh.
You gotta say members present.
I'm still learning.
That's okay.
Members present: Mark Veekeber, Kevin Myers, James Mead, Bruce is not here, Kansas Yelcom, Doug Fote, and Lisa Alsop. Numbers present for my committee then?
No, no.
Read that as number one.
Number one, Besar City Joint Regional Committee Meeting was called to order by Candy at 6:00 P.M. Is there any public participation over the easement of Finley Hill? Or the disposition of city parking lot number two?
Or anything not on the agenda.
Or anything not on the agenda that has to do with public lands and buildings?
Actually has to do with...
Everything. Okay, I'm so sorry. This is my first time starting.
That's okay.
Please don't get me... I'm trying. Any part of public participation on any matters?
Anything at all? Anything not on the agenda?
Anything not on the agenda. Okay. Nothing? Okay. Order of committee business, we'll go ahead and talk about the easement. We'll easement for Finley Hill. I'm gonna call my committee to order at 6:02 P.M.
This is Jim. I want to read the minutes from the public meeting on September 6th, item number two.
I would love to do that.
Get you updated to where we are.
Sorry about this. Okay, easement for Finley Hill. Mayor, this was from the last meeting. Mayor Jeff Reeser explained that as part of the city's 2021 bicentennial, private residents have expressed an interest in speaking Finley Hill 700 North Sandusky Ave. To call attention to the area's connection to Johnny Appleseed. An easement would be needed to allow for the garden to be placed on city property and the city would maintain the garden. It would be funded via a private donation. Fote made a motion to request legislation approving the easement with a second by Alsop. Motion passed by voice vote. The matter will go to Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Does anyone... any discussions on this?
Mayor.
Yes, I do need some guidance. Would you like to talk more about this project?
Sure. This is a project that's been in work for quite a while. Finley Hill was the the last known location for Johnny Appleseed trees that he planted here. And former resident Elaine Naples is working on a project. It's all funded already, private donations. Two, we're gonna plant some apple trees there. And those trees actually are, I think they were purchased trees today that were actually grafted from the original Johnny Appleseed trees.
Do you have any idea when they're gonna be able to start on that?
Well, we have to have easement first. They're gonna start on this year.
Okay.
Probably, no later. We typically try to plant trees in the fall.
So this is a final...
That's what it looks like, yeah. Now, in the middle there, you'll see a large apple. She's been working on the design. Those are gonna be historic markers. Finley Hill was the site of Mr. Finley, who was a nativity in town. He's also a civil war general. And that's where the house stood. Now it's his Arby's, obviously. They've been very gracious about letting us use the area for one of our historic sites.
So will they be doing this in the spring, summer, and then planting the trees in the fall?
Yeah.
Like it should be done by next...
It should be done by this fall completely.
Okay.
And I'm not 100% sure on the deadlines though, but easement's the next step. And there's work planning, work...
They are, all the projects are pretty much funded by donations then?
It's all funded. There'd be no city funds. I think we showed it to everybody last time. You saw it. It's really a nice thing.
I'd like to... yes, we do.
Just for clarification on the easement, are we going on into their path the right of way?
Yeah, we'll be on their property.
So they're giving us the easement?
I'm not on your committee, but I do have a quick question for the mayor. Has any consideration been given to if passersby want to stop and look at this? Are they just gonna need to walk in the grass or is it gonna be...
They'll be close to the sidewalk. They can see the sidewalk.
Kind of a steep hill.
Yeah, it'll be very close. You can see the sidewalk.
What about... I have a quick question also, mayor. What about visibility from pulling off a limit there?
They'll park in Arby's lot and walk down. They only have a little bit to do that.
They just meant like driving down the street like bus getting a ride. Is that gonna... You don't see it affecting it at all?
No, I don't think so.
You think it's back far enough? Okay.
It's not gonna affect any kind of right of way view.
So future maintenance is taken up by...
It'll all be volunteers. Make sure it's mulched and watered and pruned, all those things.
I'll make a motion to ask for the easement for Finley Hill.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There's only three.
That's the great question for Bruce. Okay, motion carried. We're gonna move on to the disposition of city parking lot number two.
And I can speak to that too.
I'm gonna go ahead. I'll read from the meeting Thursday for the easement. If you don't mind, is that okay?
Go right again.
So Mayor Jeff Reeser reported that the owner of a Baker's Restaurant, the owner of Baker's Restaurant has expressed an interest in purchasing the adjacent city parking lot number two, 220 North Sandusky Ave in the city. The administration is seeking legislation to turn the property over to the City Community Improvement Corporation so that the entity could manage the sale. Ron Smith of Baker's has detailed the business's expansion plans, which would include outdoor seating. Reeser explained that proceeds from the lot, from the sale could be used to upgrade and maintain the city's other important lots. For mayor?
Yes, so Ron and Connie were here last night, so you can answer questions too. So the idea is the parking lot right now is primarily used by bakers. It was used for, by the Julians and then Besar's diner for quite a while too. Baker's is one of our largest tourist draws. And it would be very, very nice if they could use that for their intention then to open up some public seating there. And then, at the same time, we can use that money to repair some of our parking lots which are in badly repaired too.
Anything else that you...
So it's kind of a win. I would call it the proverbial, I hate the cliche, but it's a win-win. And they would be maintaining the whole area. You wouldn't have to maintain it anymore.
They gain some more parking to do, some more accessible, maybe you got parking to do like that.
Yeah, we had a praise last summer, fall. And they've agreed to pay the praise price.
Anyone wanna... have a motion?
I'll have a motion.
To refer this to, refer the property, transfer the property to the CIC.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state name. Motion carries. Would like to recess the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 6:10 P.M.
And I'll call Economic Development to order at 6:10 P.M. And in fact, here we have the letter from letter from Besar's Public Library Director Stephanie Buchanan. Dear Besar's City Council members, Besar's Public Library Board of Trustees has received the resignation of trustee Carissa Fankhauser. Due to Miss Fankhauser's other commitments, her resignation is effective immediately. The procedure term expires on December 31st, 2020. Besar's Public Library Board of Trustees would like Besar's City Council to appoint one of the following persons to replace Carissa Fankhauser. Tricia Breitner, charge master and credit analyst for Avita, Kathleen Fisk, English language arts instructor for Pioneer Career and Technology Center. There is a resume in there for both people that we've had to look over for the last couple days. Would somebody like to make a nomination?
Would you like to nominate Kathleen Fisk? Okay. Kathleen, she works at Pioneer. She's a junior teacher at Pioneer. She's always...
I'm not on your... You're you. I recommended... I recommended...
No, please.
I was committee behind, so...
I recommended Tricia myself the last time.
So you are nominating Kathleen? You're second in the nomination? What do you say, Kathleen?
I got a motion on the floor. I think it's horrible to make the choose when you don't know enough about these people. I almost wish the library would just tell us who they want.
Right. That's true. I can... I know, I think they both were up the last time too. And I'm sure they're both very highly qualified. Katie Fisk is Denny and Alice Tiner's daughter. She lives here in the entire community. She's involved in the community. She has a very impressive resume. She's willing to serve. I just hope the other person will be willing to serve the next time. Whoever doesn't get the nomination. I know Katie also is very active with young people. For instance, when they come over here for their work day, we'll have 40 or 50 kids. She manages all that too. And that's Mark's, the ex-band director's wife, yes, so...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yes.
Very dedicated family.
Yeah, very, yes. And I'm sure the other lady would be fine too. I don't know her. I just...
So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will send over our nomination of Ms. Fisk.
We'll go to the full council on March 3rd.
All right, and then for Economic Development, so we will end at 6:13 P.M. I will call the fighting order at 6:13. I'll do the links up on scheduling the public hearing for 1725 Poppy Avenue. The rezoning request. For those of you out in the audience, if you do not know what it entails, it is to change the area adjacent to United Ohio...
United Ohio? Yes. Ohio Mutual Insurance Group.
Property adjacent to United Ohio Mutual. Both churches on each side of Ohio Mutual and the property going back to Beale Avenue. All that area, they're wanting to have it rezoned to the general business from residential estates, district to general business. So that's what the public hearing is for. So what is the date? You need...
Yeah, I got confused on my brief last two weeks ago. The last week, we have everything ready. All we need is a date and everything go out. And the legislation has already been drafted. You can see it here in the packet. We need 30 days from the time that the mailings and the legal letters and the medias go out. Anytime last week in March, we don't have any meeting scheduled this time, March 23, 24, 25.
What day had we scheduled before, so I...
We had scheduled for March 10th.
So...
David.
Doug?
David.
Huh? All right, Jim, does Monday, what would it be for you, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Anytime after 3:00 is fine.
Well, yeah, we're planning on 6:00.
What, 5, 6? I think it was 6:00 last week.
At 6:00 towards the... Well, let's plan on Monday, the 23rd. Is that all right?
What's that?
23rd of...
Yeah.
On the 6:00.
Yes.
Excuse me, can't you send the mailers or you're going to...
No, I'm just trying to figure out the date, which I'm gonna have. Those will probably go out, I think tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, it'll be tomorrow. Monday will be too late, so it'll be tomorrow.
Okay. So we will make the date 23rd of March at 6:00 here at Council. All right, if there is nothing else, I'll propose fighting committee at 6:16. All right, we'll call service committee for at 6:16. Item before this is the material bids. And what these are, every year the Space Department, Service Department, the Water Department put together lists of items that need to order. So you can see in front again, this list, water distribution, street department, and water filtration. So these are items that the service director there would put out to bid. So we just need to approve, allow them to happen.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
You'll notice on page three of the water distribution supplies are, what is it, like 670 items? That we did not have last year. That will be on the, will be on the floor of the legislation for this year. Everything else is the same. And absolutely only change, everything else is the same. Removing a few items in water distribution as well. But we're adding 70 ones and...
I think there's two that come up.
Yeah.
Do you set a can? Any questions on that? This is one of the 13 things we have to do every year.
And this is something they put in the warehouse to keep on hand? Is that what it is? Okay. I was wondering, know if this is a civic project or...
I think it's commonly used.
Okay.
Do you try to keep it under control?
And you're entertaining a motion, is that what you said?
Yes.
To...
To send this on to finance, allow it to be placed out to bid. All right, and the first, I'm Alsop. And the second, I'm Yelcom. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries by voice vote. And we will recess the service committee at 6:18 P.M. And I call fighting at 6:16. All right, as you see, it's the material bids is the first item. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other information on how much the cost is gonna vary with the new six items?
We have, until we put out the, until we get the estimates from everyone, so... We're hoping they go down in price.
Does anyone have any questions?
You'll get multiple bids from multiple companies? Well, they can, yeah, exactly. Not every company bids on everything because they don't provide all those, everything on the list. So, yeah, we will always get multiple bids. And when we open the bids, you know, we have the sheets and we go down each one of it. Fifty different companies have bid their price, and I was taking those bid off the list. Yeah, there might be one company, these might bid on one or two things on that list, so...
Mr. Chair. Yes. I'll move to approve sending this forward to put it out to bid.
So I have a second.
And there's no other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Both, same sign, motion passed. Okay, the next item. Pines reservoir. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, this, we're asking for you to allow us to accept the engineering contract that we received, and it's not attached here. We actually got another estimate on the EPP and the emergency action plan. And some of the engineering work came in substantially less with this, with this engineering firm. So it's a different engineering firm that we use with the city, so we need your permission to enter the contract.
What's the name of the engineering?
It's a good question. I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was attached there. I can't remember.
Is this related to removing the dam or repairing it?
It's, it's the EPP.
No, we have, what we have to do is, some of the work for that, the Pines Dam has already been done by Grant Center Carol. And they're gonna continue on that. So, but this is for, we have to have a, by the order of ODNR, emergency plans in case they have a breach. And also, NEF reservoir needs some remedial work. That will need some engineering on that. And that's what that's for. So we're gonna continue with Grant Center Carol on the Pines reservoir.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, did you get a quote already from Grant Center for this work?
Yes, we did.
All right.
We already have a quote from them. And this company is on Columbus, so I have, for some reason, I have a mental block right now. I thought it would be attached.
I would, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the name and the dollar mark before.
For the, I can give you the dollar amount.
Right.
I'm surprised it's, it's $49,000.
And you recall what Grant Center's price was on that?
Well, their price was the same. It was $330,000.
I knew it was somewhere in that.
Now, they've already done about, that includes some of the work on the Pines, which they've already done about $60,000. So if you allow me to call Mr. Wagner here, he'll tell me the name of it.
So about $109,000 total compared to the $330,000.
Mr. Chair, I did ask the auditor about this today because I didn't have any background information either. She said that $75,000 has been budgeted, was budgeted last year for this. So there's nothing. We don't need appropriation. We just need a, we need legislation to go to contract. Our policy is that we go to contracts.
So the $60,000 we already spent is not considered in that? So we've got $75,000 budgeted for a $49,000 expectation of that.
That's what the auditor said.
Do you have a question? Is it Grant Center Carol with the lower quote? They're the higher quote, right? Okay, that's what substantially higher yet. We are not saying that, right?
Okay.
For the Pines.
For the Pines.
For the PPP, we're not saying with Grant Center.
Okay.
But they are still finishing the work on the Pines that we already contracted.
Okay, so that was, how much was that? Like we are $60,000?
He said Grant Center is about $60,000.
Okay.
So this name, this other company, so it was $49,000 yet to go. So the two, that combines to $109,000.
Okay.
Those are considered.
Initially, they had told us $330,000.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna use those ever again, right?
Well, you can't say never again.
Yeah, I found...
In case the dam's break, they gotta look downstream where all that water's gonna go. That's what the EPP plan is, and it includes all four, three or four, all the reservoirs that breach.
So technically, that's $200,000.
They're actually moving dirt, setting up.
No, no, no. The EPP, it's a, it's a plan.
They just want a plan.
Yeah. Emergency prepared, prepare this plan that is an emergency action plan. And we have to have that by order of ODNR in case we have a disaster, a breach.
This will bring us up to where we need to be.
That's right. This will, this will take. And I'm gonna go, this contract's sitting on the desk over here, so... He couldn't quite remember the name either.
So this is, you gotta end up, so this is what we're gonna do.
Okay, so that's not including the dam remediation.
True.
We're not moving a shovel full of dirt, so we're paying $50,000 to keep it safe.
It's engineering, which is required by...
Yeah, they need an emergency... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
What is the current plan with the Pines? Because I know we're drilling it down substantially.
So...
As of right now, the plans are the Pines is not gonna be reestablished.
Because actually, I mean, it seems to be just a flow-through from the other side of 30 from those fields coming through. So as far as the money being invested into dam work, I understand the plan to have to make sure that that water, if it does, if some breaches, it goes somewhere. But my question is, do we even technically need a dam there if we're not using it as a reservoir?
Oh, no, no. The Pines will be no longer. We, intentively, we have not finalized everything. The last I was informed was that there will be a breach in the dam. It'll be approximately 40 feet across at the top, about 20 feet deep, and tapered to about 20 foot wide at the bottom, that it will never fill up again. What we need to do is, with that land, we graciously give Todd the job to look for grants and...
Actually, the administration is...
Yeah, he was, we had him help research to get grants so that we wouldn't have to use any of our, you know, budget, general budget money to reclaim the land and try to make it into a possible nature preserve that people can use as a park, like Outbuy, Allmiller, what does that one? The one on the west side of Allmiller.
Under Park.
It'd be similar to something like that, but we, you know, we're, that's, it's in the works. It's, nothing's been decided, no plans have been drawn up, to my knowledge.
That's correct. We, what we've done is right now, we've just breached, or we just were draining it, which is what ODNR wants us to do. Now we have to bleach it so it doesn't fill up again. And then at that time, City Council can decide what we want to do with it. There are grants out that can reclaim it. Like a wetland. Like a wetland, yeah. Right, so those are options. Soon as we get done with everything this year, we'll come back.
But the intent is to maintain it as public land.
Yeah. The intent right now, unless Council decides you want to sell it, that would be up to you. There's, there's about 50 acres of woodlands, and there's about 40 acres of water.
Also part of the water.
So those will be discussions we'll probably, we'll probably want to have in the fall. So first things first, so we gotta get ODNR's happy. The name of the engineering firm is S and M E Incorporated. Jason Ross is the project engineer. We met with Jason a few times about the project. Many of you probably know Jason. He's from, he lives in Bucyrus. Graduated from high school. Ross.
Oh, yeah. It's S and M.
It's a local...
S and M.
So it sounds different from...
S and M.
S and M.
Oh, this is...
S. Okay.
So, yeah, so that's a company we like down around, has substantial savings.
I'd like to see the money stay in the community too.
Well, sure. We also have, you know, we also save a substantial amount of money on this, so...
And the money he makes since he...
And they have, they have excellent reputation. We think it's a really good thing for us, so...
If there's no other questions?
That makes me happy.
I believe we need a motion to enter this, accept them as our engineering for this, so... If there's no other questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passed. All right. Now we have the Crawford County Council of Beijing, levy support.
All right. Yeah, well, Kathy, the researcher, Karen was here the other night from the council meeting. They have requested, they wanted to speak first of all, and they requested that the council would consider having a resolution of support for the, the additional levies that they're seeking. And I think Ms. Herschel said on a hundred thousand dollar home valuation, it was fifty-four dollars a year. As the community ages, and as the lone senior citizen sitting up here, it's a valuable resource for the community, whatever you decide. I think the community's always been very supportive of this, especially for, it really is a good place for people with low incomes and transportation, everything they do is, it's all for benefit of, benefit of the community, getting people to and from appointments and checking on people, meals on the wheels. It's a, it's a very valuable organization, so.
Um, I just want to go on record saying, before anybody can, here's what else I'm getting ready to say, is I plan to vote for this. However, I, I'm against having us have a resolution telling other people, you know, how to vote. I think that that's up to the voter. That's, that's the whole purpose of the election. And I don't think it's, you know, we use us to spend the two hundred dollars of taxpayer money to pass a resolution. I would be in favor of us just simply issuing a statement, if we may, saying that we are in favor of it. But I'm against a resolution for it.
Jim? Do you have any questions, common? No? That sounds like an idea of me, I'm gonna say the two hundred bucks. Anybody else have any comments? You two be quiet over there.
While I'm thinking.
I feel, I feel, this is my current employer, so I feel like I can't say anything. Or I should say something, I don't know. Either way.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Um, is there any facts, I mean, I'm trying to keep a few, is there any facts I'm missing here that you want to clarify?
Not really, it's just our current aging population, our current population in Crawford County of seniors sixty and over is higher than any of the other surrounding counties, and it's gonna grow faster than any of our surrounding counties, like this whole region. We are gonna wind up, I think, with thirty percent senior citizens. It's something that we really need to look at, we need to support the seniors. But we also need to work on our base here, taxpayers, to be able to.
Future seniors.
Our future seniors, yeah. I know there's people that sometimes it's the only person they see when people deliver meals on wheels. That is the only person they see, I have to deliver meals on wheels.
Somebody check in.
And plus, yes, we check in on them. If we go to deliver a meal and someone is not there, we immediately call our building. The building calls their first, they call their house. If they don't get a hold of them, they call their contact. Um, if they can't get a hold of their emergency contact, we send the police for a well person check. And that has saved many people's lives, honestly, it really has. Let alone that, just being able to get to the doctor's appointment. Lots of people around here don't have families in town. A lot of the younger generation has moved, and it's left the older generation here. And sometimes they lose the ability to drive. Instead, there's, it's all encompassing. I never realized what all they did until I started working there. There's home care, they do housekeeping, where they go into people's houses and clean them so that people can stay in their own homes for longer instead of winding up in a nursing home or somewhere else. Um, it leads them to have more independence, a better quality of life. Do home delivered meals, they do referral, like, any senior sixty and over can call. And if they have a problem, we try, they try to find a solution. The social worker there does. And I hate to leave out, I don't even know if I'm leaving out services, activities, that's what I do there currently. Um, but that is not funded by the levy, that's self-funded through fundraisers. There's the happy fun part of it, but everything else is integral to the seniors' health.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I intend on voting for this. My mom uses their services. She doesn't drive, so for a dollar fifty, they will take my mom to the doctor. I don't have to miss work for that, they will take my mom home. Having said that, when someone came up here and spoke for ten minutes about something that we all feel very strongly about, if you don't like old people, there's something wrong with that thing. She walks out of the room, and you asked her, would you like us to come up with a resolution? That leaves me a little salty when people have stood up here for hours asking for a resolution and collected thousands of signatures. I just would feel better if we did not pick and choose like that.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I, I know, I had, I was thinking the same thing, and I thought, well, maybe I missed it because they actually were coming to ask for a resolution, and I didn't hear it.
No.
And I, and that's the one reason I asked, and I thought, well, maybe they changed their minds and said, what the heck? They're out there, I'm gonna ask them right now, so. And, yeah, I thought it was a little odd.
It's not a hot button topic, so it's easier to get it.
Maybe she was nervous about the answer.
Right. And, and I like Barry's wife. I, I'm just saying, because it's not a hot button topic, we're willing to do that. And in all reality, that's on the ballot.
Yeah, I, I don't mind, I wasn't really, I was trying to carry the water for them, I just, and I.
And I don't have a problem making a statement. I, I am one to vote for it.
Yeah, I, I would vote for it too. My wife does meals on wheels, and she.
My family uses their services.
She gets a lot out of it, so, whatever you decide, I'm just kind of the messenger here.
Hey, what? It's up to us. I, I, I'm agreeing with Kevin who said that not to make a resolution, but to have a letter of support from the council, signed by council and administration.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have an idea. Uh, I'll run it by the law director, but, you know, just make sure it's, and I could have something from my office, if that would be, if you want to have a separate one, I mean, or if you wanted to combine, I think it. But I wouldn't want to speak for every member of council. You know, you'd have, I would think you'd want it to be unanimous. So, and I know Mr. Trup is not here, so, I mean, so anyway, I'm just, I could just do that from the administration if Rob could agree that would be proper. I'm sorry. If you're all planning on voting for it, you're not really telling anyone how to vote, you're just, you know, saying that you support. You know, what you said kind of about, you're trying, you know, if you tell people how to vote.
I just don't see it as our place to, to pass a resolution on something.
So like, if you did a letter of support, would that be sent to?
Yeah, I have no problem going, I have no problem with them writing down that I said I'm in favor of. That, that's not my, you know, that's not where I'm coming from, like, I just, I don't think it's worthy of a, of a resolution.
What weight would the resolution carry versus if you did do, say you did a resolution?
My opinion?
What weight would that carry?
My opinion, you as a citizen might read that we passed a resolution, and you might say, oh, gosh, they all like it, I should vote for it. Well, I'm telling you, I like it, you know, so if you're gonna think that way, I guess it's, I guess that's where I'm at with it.
I just, I didn't know what weight the resolution would carry.
It doesn't, it's not, it's not anything legal. It's, it's a legal document that states that we passed a resolution in favor of something, is what it is.
It's two hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, that's right. So there is a, a new resolution, and people probably realize this, but every time we record something, we have to pay to have that recorded, so, you know, that's always a concern.
And I also believe, if I may, that, you know, if you're gonna pass a resolution supporting it, you should probably pass a resolution for everything that's ever on the ballot. I mean, who are we to pick and choose? And I think we're better off just to, to draw back from it, not pass a resolution. Again, like, like Lisa said, like I said, like you said, you know, by all means, I'm in favor. My family's used it as well. I think the marvelous service would be hardly lost without it. I like your idea.
Okay, I'll run it by the law director and just see what he says. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we ever passed resolutions for ballot issues before?
The only resolution we passed was for the library. Am I correct?
Library, did we do?
Well, no, we had to put it on the ballot, because we, we're the governing body, that was, we had to put it on the ballot. We had to, because we're the governing.
Yeah, typically, we don't, you know, typically, we don't.
Well, I was just gonna say, if we start doing that, then maybe every time something's on the ballot, we're always gonna be asked, and then there'll be a contentious voting issue that'll be on the ballot. And then they'll say, well, you passed it before, probably just better not to start to have it.
Probably pretty good advice.
So, the committee area.
I think in general, I think everybody is in favor of it.
I don't know anybody who wouldn't support them.
Well, there's gonna be forty percent voting against everybody.
But I mean, most of the community, a lot of the community is affected by someone who uses that service.
So are we wanting to just?
Not make a motion.
Not make a motion, but have a letter of support from council, bring the council to.
It's gonna carry as much weight as one or the other, so. So, just to add. The only question I would have for you then is, is that, you know, are you gonna have the ones that want their name on it cited? Or are you gonna just do a majority vote?
I, my opinion, if I may again, if you want to create a letter from the administration, and then any of us who wish to affix our name to them, which I would say I will, I think.
I do too.
I hear that over there, I think, I think we all will, yeah. I think that's the way to go, one letter from you.
So we need a motion?
No.
And put the two hundred dollars.
Okay. We'll go with what you're trying to do, okay. Well, they, I'm just, oh.
We'll leave it open to any council member to sign the possible letter from the administration's office. All right. All right, but if there's nothing else for finance, I will adjourn at six forty-two.
Call Health and Safety to order at six forty-two. Anybody wish to speak on the matter? I know we've heard extensively over the last couple of weeks, is there any new information you want to share? If so, step up to the podium and feel free, and as you're coming forward, if you don't mind, Robert, I'm gonna kind of say that, you know, for those of you that may not have been here, we kind of tabled this two weeks ago with the intention of this committee being able to do some research, which I'm hopeful we've done, and so we can continue, and I'd like this to come to a decision. I would, I'm anxious to hear from you at this point, so go ahead.
I'm not gonna get up here and throw stamps in support or favor of gun control, Robert. We've, we've heard all those arguments. What I will say this, is, last local election, we had one thousand nine hundred and twenty votes for the highest vote there, which was Joyce. She ran on, she ran on a post. The mayor had like twelve hundred and fifty votes, and then there were two candidates, Dan Wire, Boomerang, who split well over a thousand votes. Resolution, or the petition has around nine hundred signatures. Well over four hundred are people that live inside the city. If you want to factor in the five mile radius that we enabled our service director, you've probably got another hundred, hundred and fifty there where the impact's our community. You only had two thousand people vote in the last local election. That's a, to me, a petition with that many signatures in favor of this is a pretty substantial number. If you don't think four hundred votes are gonna matter, I think you're wrong, because it will. And those signatures will turn into votes. And I'm not, it's not like I'm trying to bully, but you gotta understand something, and I appreciate that you brought up the initial resolution, because I was gonna mention how it seemed how we were so open-armed to support a new tax. Now, I'm not gonna debate the tax, because I, obviously, I agree with Lisa. These are senior citizens. My mom is in her sixties, she's a, she's had, she's a five-year lung cancer survivor. We get it, everybody has that. But you need to understand from the forty-year-old single father taxpayer too, we are overtaxed already in this country, in this state, in this community. So for the administration, for the council, to see me, and that's how it appeared to me, sitting here Tuesday, that with open arms, we're all in favor of a resolution to support a tax that we fought to and nailed and argued, and then pretty mean to each other through social media, in person, and I'm, I'm including myself in that. We have, it's pretty brutal. But we're fighting to the nail to ask for a, a resolution regarding our constitutional rights that we were, it, again, it appeared open-armed for a resolution for a new tax. And I'm, I'm gonna vote yes for the tax. It's, it's about thirty bucks per year, not a big deal, but it's, it's the principle, it's the principle. And again, I'll reiterate, you had two thousand voters in the last election. You had five, almost five, twenty-four and five hundred city residents on that petition. It will make a difference. People are waking up, people are paying attention. That's, I mean, that's really where we're at with it. And, and again, I appreciate you bringing it up, and Lisa, the points you guys made were things I was gonna say anyway. And it's good, it, I've been discouraged from talking to the county commissioners, and some of the things I've heard in here, very discouraged with the political, political process. And Tuesday I left, again, I was not, was not happy with that, just seeing how open, how we were gonna, a new tax, everybody's for that, fine. But it's, if you, if you look at it on the principle side of it, man, it's kind of, that's discouraging to people. We're all about a new tax, but when it comes to constitutional rights, it's, yeah, we gotta talk about that, we gotta think about this. I don't know, something just doesn't seem right to me with that. But again, I appreciate that you guys brought that up, this is a valid point, so, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Anybody else have anything to say?
I don't know if this is really new, but.
New-ish?
New-ish. I've been carrying this around my purse. I'm with Miller, eight hundred Roger Street, and you know that. I was here, told you January twenty-first, that the Second Amendment sanctuary city status is a bad idea for us, our small town. And I understand that these petitions were gathered, our group considered doing the same thing, chose not to. But nothing has changed to me since January twenty-first, other than more counties are adopting this. But as your mother probably asked you, if all your friends jump off the bridge, would you jump off the bridge too? As far as I can tell, you have two sides, completely divided on the value of this designation and probably many other issues. Team Gun predicts a slippery slope of gun grabbing. Team Snowflake, which also includes multiple gun owners, predicts a slippery slope of increased gun violence and potential damage to our town's reputation and financial stability. So you committee members get to choose, is this a great idea? Needs to go back to council for a vote or to the ballot so we can have nine more months of this back and forth? Or does it need to die right here? No matter which way you choose, a good number of people will be unhappy. Personally, you know, you just recently had your service director residency issue. You had a lot of people on both sides, you know, people were opposed to the change. I saw both sides of that, but that's just me. But in spite of a good, goodly number of loud voices, you voted by a slim majority for the residency change. And I'm asking you to do the same thing tonight, listen to the right voices, which are not always the loudest voices. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, a couple of the things that I want to say real quick before I get to you two gentlemen, if I can. There has been a lot of back and forth, and I commended you all before, and I want to commend you again. It's a passionate subject, but I think you guys have done a really good job of maintaining stability in here. Probably not in social media, but I'm happy about that. One of the things that I've spoken, Robert, I'll, I'll kind of speak to you a little bit, if you kind of, are one of the spearheads, faces of. One of the things that I spoke, and Robert, I'll, I'll kinda speak to you a little bit, um, if you kinda are one of the spearheads, faces of this.
Grabbing.
Um, one of the things that I shared with you, that I, I was against the word sanctuary for many reasons. I was fearful of retaliation from, uh, at the state level of, uh, grants and, and things like that. You know, we talked about how no cities have done this, there's, I think we're up to eighteen or nineteen counties.
There's the counties.
Okay, but no cities yet, so I'm always eerie, well, I don't wanna be the first one to do anything like that, you know, because what is it? So, one of the things, though, that I will, that I did kinda wanna bring up, that I don't know if you guys know yet, Marion County, um, if you haven't had a chance, I do wanna read this real quick, Marion County passed a resolution yesterday. The original resolution that we started off with was fourteen pages long. Marion County's was down to three paragraphs, I'm gonna read those three paragraphs, because I kinda, I, I can't say I'm a hundred percent favor of anything yet, but I, I'm, I'm gonna read this. Whereas the Marion County commissioners have been notified by concerned citizens of the possibility of the state of Ohio overriding citizens' rights as contained in the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. And whereas the Marion County commissioners each swore an oath to support the United States Constitution and the Ohio Constitution as a requirement to hold elected office and prior to each of the commissioners' military service. Therefore, be it resolved that so long as the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution remains, the Marion County commissioners will continue to uphold our oath to support it along with the entirety of the United States and Ohio Constitution. Now, while that's only three paragraphs, that's, that's three powerful paragraphs, and I mentioned in talking with the Millers a couple of weeks ago, I said, boy, wouldn't it be nice if we could find some common ground? I don't know what your opinion is, I think this leans a little towards more, some commonality between the two sides. Because it, it takes away the fears that one side has, it takes away some of the fears the other side has.
I agree with you, I mean, and again, it's another subject that I brought up early, early on, was First Amendment issues. I think that, that sends a message from the city of Desires on the Constitution in entirety, which I'm in, yeah, I'm in. And I think the fears, the concerns of people like me are, we do need more validation from our elected officials.
Yeah.
And it's unfortunate that it's come to that, but that's.
And as I promised you two weeks ago, and even before, I've done a ton of homework on this, I've, I've made phone calls, I've done reading. I, I spoke with our, uh, State Senator Burke, I spoke with Representative Erwin McLean, I spoke with commissioners. You know, a lot of the initial language that was in that first fourteen-page document was worrisome to me. Uh, and, and part of the thing, like I said, the san, the word sanctuary bothered me. And then the other part of that was, was, you know, we all stood in here and we raised our hand, and we swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio. And, and with when I read the initial resolution, we were almost backing off of that, and saying, well, I'm not gonna uphold part of it. Well, but I, I did, I took an oath to do that, and I think you understand, and I think where I'm coming from, from that. So now, having been able to express, you know, what I think of that, I'm gonna turn it over to you guys. You've also had your, your chance to do your research and come up with your opinion, and, and, Mark, I'll start with you.
With, with us being elected representatives for this city, we're here to manage the city's budget, the city's finances, the employees. We're here to handle with the limited money we got, to stretch it as far as we possibly can, and try to do the best for the citizens, without having to raise taxes, without having to raise water rates, food rates, or if we have to, keep it as low as possible. With the resolution, as was stated earlier, as a sanctuary city, I'm not here to impose, not against gun ownership, I have one. It's for protection, that's all it's for, but I'm not here to impose my will of seven of us onto thirteen thousand people, as in saying, you have to agree with what I said. I signed your petition to put it on ballot. I'm not against going to the ballot and let the voters vote on it. I'm not one to want to make us a sanctuary city by me declaring it for the rest of the people. I, I don't, the people understand, they elected me to be one of the seven to decide on how we're gonna spend the money to appropriate it to, uh, the mayor's office, to the auditor's office, to the police department, the fire department, the street department. They understand that we try to stretch it as far, but to declare something like this as a sanctuary city, when there's enough people on both sides, right now, with the number of people I've talked to, I'm getting a fifty-fifty split, I'm not getting an overwhelming majority against or for. And there, you know, there's days I talk, and there's a lot of people who are for it, and then the next day, I got a lot of people who are against it. So, to me, I can't, I can't vote to make us a sanctuary city. If we can find a common ground, possibly, that is not declaring us a sanctuary city. Could be something like that, but right now, I'm not gonna vote for or against, I'm just, I'm not gonna vote. If it comes that it needs a second for a resolution, I will not second it.
Mr. Chairman, can I add? What if you, using some of the reasoning that we brought up earlier, if, if the council decides to support this, have a, similar to what we, with the council majoring, you could have the council member sign who wants to sign this, publish that, and then you would still save the two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, that's, you know. And the other thing I would, I would consider too, you've got, you've got.
But this is a little, pardon me, you've been in there, I'm not trying to, I, I still, everybody knows that trying to vote for, uh, support a tax, to support a agency that's gonna help people, okay, we're saying we are in favor to help, but for me to impose that you, who are not a gun owner, you have to, you're gonna have to agree that I have to, I gotta do it.
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying there, Michael.
I'm not, there's some people who are conscientious objectors, and I'm not going to impose on them what I, I believe in owning firearm for protection, or possibly for hunting, whatever, for self-defense. But there are those who are conscientious objectors who do not agree with me, and I'm not gonna sit here and impose my thought on that onto them. If it is, it should go to the ballot and let them vote to oppose or support. That's, that's just me, I, I, I can't do it.
Sure. So, I took your oath, it was to the entire Constitution, it was not to pick amendments out of it to, just for that, it was the entire Constitution. That's what I wanna vote for. I don't wanna vote for a sanctuary city, sanctuary city sounds like, uh,
What was it doing?
Immigrants coming or something, I was like, no.
That terminology.
I don't like that term at all, and I don't even like coming out and saying the Second Amendment, let's support the whole Constitution. That's what we were sworn in for, you are a Marine, that's what you swore, you are a Marine, that's what you swore, to the entire Constitution, not just an amendment out.
So, what if, what if you change the wording, not a sanctuary city, but maybe a constitutional city, a?
I'm a lot more favorable of that.
Let me ask you this, though. Do we see any of our other amendments being attacked by the state of Ohio at present time?
Uh, absolutely.
Which one?
Go down to Ohio State, let's watch.
No, 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 tell me the law.
Hold on, hold on, we're, if I may, maintain stability here, we're here to discuss this right now.
I'm trying to make a point, Kevin, that's, that's the whole reason behind the Second Amendment constitutional, that's what got this whole movement going, was the laws in regards to the Second Amendment.
I feel the First Amendment's being attacked every day.
With laws or just by people?
By people in general, I mean, just, uh, personally, you have a right to speak, because the First Amendment. I, I respect your speech.
Yes, sir.
And what you have to say.
Yes, sir.
You're getting better at it too, by the way.
The point I'm making is, we're not trying, the, the petition, the resolution is not in regards to people in general. It's a direct statement to the governor, to the state of Ohio, who are directly trying to pass laws that affect the Second Amendment and due process, but the Second, the, the Second Amendment is departed, in my opinion. I don't see the state of Ohio, right now, having any legislation in committee or tabled that's attacking the First Amendment.
I don't even know what all we have in legislation. Well, all legislation that we have in our committees now.
Yes, sir.
And as far as the state goes, I have no idea, I don't think anybody does.
No, I understand, I appreciate, appreciate your point of view, you're exactly right, because Constitution is, as a whole, is the most important thing here.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, are any of the other counties, like, there's like a fourth of the state, are they choosing to support the entire Constitution versus any one single, which is basically covering it all, I don't wanna say it's vanilla, but it's.
The first few counties in Southern Ohio, I do believe they specifically stated Second Amendment.
Has it changed?
No, I don't, then Almarion, Moro.
It's one of the more recent ones, I think, have changed.
Yeah, yeah, and as, as.
As what you were gonna read for Mary.
Yeah, as a. Yeah, it, it has evolved to be constitutional, not necessarily Second Amendment. But initially, the whole movement began with Second Amendment.
Mark. I'm gonna read a letter from a, I'll keep the name of the person private right now, but it is public record, if you need it, you can get this. The purpose of this letter is not to debate the pros and cons of gun control. Everyone has their own strongly held beliefs on all sides of that subject, and are entitled to those beliefs. Nor is the intention to criticize city officials and council members, their service is greatly appreciated. This is simply a, an humble expression of concern regarding the designation of Desires as a Second Amendment sanctuary. I don't think it is an appropriate action to be pursued through city council for the following reasons. Number one, the designation would appear to represent the values of the majority of the citizens without allowing them to decide this at the ballot box. Number two, citizens not city officials or council declarations can and can and should express their views on the state gun control legislation directly to the responsible state officials. So, they're saying citizens should, not us. Putting a controversial label of any kind on the city may put off potential business investors, new residents, and visitors. Controversy is not a, is not generally attractive. Four, there are many sides of important issues some citizens may wish the city to endorse through labels. Where slash how do you draw the line? Is one part of the Constitution more important than the other? Example, pro-life city, sensible gun law sanctuary, abortion rights sanctuary, elder rights haven, L G B T, B Q T, uh, welcome center, straight only site, equal pay for all here, and so on. Number five, it will needlessly agitate division and conflict between citizens and between officials. The city needs everyone working together to thrive. Six, there is no apparent benefit to the citizens or the city in making this token gesture. It may invite unexpected attention and reactions city officials would have to manage, taking time and resources away from local issues near and dear to voters' hearts, streets, utilities, safety services, et cetera. Thank you for hearing my opinion, I wish you all well in your service to the community. That was from a, uh, an, a nice lady who wrote this, it was not directed to me, it was directed to the whole council. Everybody got the letter, it was not, I didn't get this by soliciting it. I think she stated it very well, saying that, that's, and that's what I kept feeling in my own heart, that I'm not here to impose my will. I believe it should be voted, like, I tried to express to you, Robert, it's why I signed your petition to put it on the ballot. That, that's where I stand.
I, that's part of it too, I'm not where people stand, our elected officials. I will say this, did you go to the Republican debate, though, the primary debate?
I was, I was.
Did you are there?
I was.
And virtually every person sitting on the stage complained that they cannot get in touch with their state representative. How many of you have spoken with Dave Burke in person? I have, and when I did it, a couple of weeks ago when I was in Marysville, I never even knew he was my senator. If you were to complain, I talked to him on Facebook one time, he doesn't return messages. So, it goes back to the frustration, and voters, you women, you can preach all day how we need to take it to the state and talk, they don't listen either. So, where do we go, who do we talk to?
I just wanna, I, I understand the, you know, there's opposition and, you know, you don't wanna, and I'm not directing this at you, Mark. Somebody might not wanna vote on something because of that, but look how much opposition there was to the safety service director residency. But yet, this council still voted it, voted for it, and there's three of us that did not. Well, it, it passed, so, I, I'm just pointing out that, and then here we have a situation where, I mean, the citizens of this city have signed a petition, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them for, and then we're not gonna do it. So, that's, that's all I'm saying.
So, either you wish to make a motion to send this forward in any shape or form or manner? Not, sir, not at this point.
What's wrong with saying you're upholding the Constitution?
Again, they've all, they've shared their opinions, and it's up to one or the two of them to make a motion, they both declined to, so this is gonna become a closed matter. And with that, I'll recess health and safety at seven oh eight P M. Before we start the ad hoc committee, would you guys mind a two-minute recess? Please, thank you. All right, we're gonna call the ad hoc committee, council rules and procedures quarter at seven thirteen P M. Um, just so everybody's aware, the members of this committee are myself, Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, and Candace Yocum. Bruce is absent, uh, recovering from surgery, so it'll be the three of us, uh, on this committee that are here tonight. What I'm gonna do is go down through, from start to finish and read through. Um, and I know Mrs. Deschawn has had some issues that she'd like to bring up, and so I've asked her ahead of time, that if I skip over something, uh, that she wanted to speak on, to, to please interrupt me, and that would go for anybody in the audience. uh, that she wanted to speak on, to, to please interrupt me, and that would go for anybody in the audience. Please feel free if you have questions. So if you will, you may want to separate.
May I ask?
Yeah.
A question of the law director. Um, back on January the ninth, twenty twenty, at the joint committee meeting, um, Council President Fankhauser had asked if he could be on the committee, the Ad-Hoc Committee. And according to the audio recording, you responded, no, got to come from committee. You have an advisory role. So you said to Kirk that he could not be a member of the Ad-Hoc Committee meeting.
Okay.
So my question is, why then, in two thousand seventeen, when the Ad-Hoc Committee was, uh, formed for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Council Rules of Procedure, why then was Council President Love a member of that committee? And yourself? More in particular, Love, because.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the exact question was that I was asked.
Kirk Fankhauser said, can I be on that committee?
Okay.
And you said?
With respect to this committee?
This, yes, the Ad-Hoc Committee, and you said, no. And so my question is, why did you say no, that Kirk couldn't be on it, and you said it was because you have an advisory role? But yet, Council President Love was allowed to be on the same Ad-Hoc Committee when you were doing it in two thousand seventeen? And yourself?
Yeah, well, I don't know that we were on the committee.
Oh, yes, you were. Want me to show you the paper?
Okay.
Um, SARS City Council regular joint committee, Ad-Hoc Committee members, Martin McKeever, Dan Wireball, Rob Radliff, Garnet, Sis, Love, Chair.
Okay. Then, I, I still have the position that I shouldn't be on the committee. I should be advisory to the committee. And Mr. Fankhauser should be advisory to the committee as well. So I would say that in seventeen, when they listed those people as committee members, that probably wasn't, uh, the best way to do it. It's still, it should be an advisory role. My role should be advisory. Council President's role should be advisory. In my opinion, I don't know that there's anything that prohibits it from being the, uh, on the committee, if they so chose the wanting to be. But our position should be advisory to the committee, in my opinion.
Advisory now, but not advisory back then.
I don't know what, I understand that they listed us as committee members there. I don't know that there was anything official.
If, for clarity, if I could, just, and I don't know if this is important enough to you, um, I met with Mr. Radliff, I met with the police department, I met with Kirk. So I did go through this, uh, and in this subject matter with Kirk, uh, we have gone all the way through him, so he did, even if it's not listed on the committee, did have input, if that matters. I just, I wanted to be clear on that. So if you take the last couple of pages off the back of your packet, that'll help you. We're going to go through those. What I did was, based on my conversations with the police department, with Kirk, with Mr. Radliff, with, uh, Todd Hill, um, come up with some suggested, uh, changes. So we'll go down through that, starting with, uh, page one of six on, uh, citizen participation. Um, on number one, uh, was suggested that, uh, to change the wording to any person entering the council chambers is asked to remove his or her headwear during the pledge of allegiance, prayer, or when otherwise instructed by the council president, unless such headwear is worn for medical or religious reasons. All persons entering council chambers will silence all electronic devices. That is coming from, I'm just saying, any man entering council chambers is to remove his hat unless asked one for medical reasons. So I suppose, well, what I'd like to do is just read each one through and then see, is there any discussion, any question, suggestion?
Does that mean Tuesday's on?
Yeah, that's, so we're talking, uh, no, um. This would be for council meetings. Sorry.
I've fully read all these earlier days. I don't know if there's anything else, and we're all.
Oh, no, we're going to read each one of these. I am, I have waited. I came two weeks ago to attend this Ad-Hoc Committee meeting. No quorum. You folks then told me we're going to have it Tuesday, February the eleventh at five o'clock, to which I said, I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be in Indiana. I will be back on Thursday. Could we have the meeting then? Nope. Well, I guess it was you were going to check.
Yeah.
So I made emails to the committee members, and I, you know, was told that, um, you know, Bruce is out because of surgery. I was told that Mrs. Yocum was out of town. So then I come back the following, we, Thursday, after being out in Indiana. I send a text to Kirk asking him, did you attend the Ad-Hoc meeting? If you did, did you videotape it? Was there recording? Da, 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 da. I get a text back, there was no meeting. It was canceled because there was no quorum. So I was told then by Todd Hill that on Monday, he sent a notice to the news media setting forth that there was going to be a special Ad-Hoc Committee meeting on Tuesday, February the eleventh at five o'clock. Then he sends me a second email saying, here's the second notice that I asked for, and it was a notice that the meeting was canceled because there was no quorum, and that was like at two something in the afternoon on Monday. I, I, I'm a little curious as to how, on Thursday, you know that you're going to do a meeting on Tuesday, but then all of a sudden, there's no quorum. And if I understand correctly, one of the committee members was out of town. And I mean, I'm just a little curious as to, well, out of town, we're out of state. I just personally felt there was a little bit of a runaround. I thought it would have been nice if I'd have been notified that the meeting had been canceled. I went on the documents on demand to check the announcements where you could committee meetings. There was no meeting put on there, or no announcement stating that there was going to be a special Ad-Hoc Committee meeting. There was no announcement on there that the meeting had been canceled. However, I was told by, through an email from, um, Council Clerk, um, Hill, that, um, he did send out a notice. The notice was, sent out a notice to the news media that there was going to be a meeting on February the eleventh at five for the Ad-Hoc. However, that announcement was not placed under the announcements on the minutes on demand, which is where all the other announcements are put for committee meetings. It was put on the events calendar. I was then told that there was a cancellation notice for that Ad-Hoc Committee meeting put on the announcements. However, I told him, I checked the announcements, and it was not on there. Well, he said, I wouldn't find it now because it was replaced by the agenda for last Tuesday's council meeting.
Mr. Scherer, I just, I just, not to interrupt your venue, but I, I just want to clarify some things. And, and part of the events calendar is, is, um, my fault. We just started implementing the events calendar, and we had not, Todd and me had not had any discussion on how to handle if an event was canceled. But since you have brought this to light, I have told Todd that we are not going to delete, we're not going to, when a meeting gets canceled, we're not going to delete that event. We're going to leave it on there and just put canceled. At the same time, uh, you know, the announcements for, that's got like the one-page announcement, we're going to also issue an announcement on there that says it was canceled. So there's going to be some uniform, uniformity there. And part of this was, we, we just started using the calendar, and we didn't know, there's, there's, there was no effort here to deprive you from coming to this meeting. I can assure you that. Do you have any questions on what I just said, or?
I was going to send you an email back to all the emails you were sending to me, and it started out with, I don't know if I should scream, shake my head, or laugh. But I didn't send it. I figured it wouldn't do any good. Um, but, but my, I mean, you're wanting to now just, I want to go through each one of these.
I plan to.
Thank you.
I have them all typed up. So can, can we go through those now?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So number one, as I just read, um, Lisa, you asked a question. This is citizen participation. This will be Tuesday and Thursday. So before, you had to remove your hat. Well, Gary's wearing a hat, and I'm okay with that.
Lots of people are.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. So I think what we're saying is.
It's just Tuesdays.
No, anytime, you have to take it off when there's a prayer, the pledge of allegiance, or otherwise asked.
Oh, okay.
For other reasons. So we're saying you can wear a hat.
Okay, good.
Any feedback, or can I move on?
Zach, you can put your hat on if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number two, currently says all visitors are asked to arrive at least fifteen minutes prior to opening of the council meeting so that they may sign a visitor attendance sheet. Suggestion is to change that to, all visitors are asked to arrive fifteen minutes prior to the opening of the council meeting so they may sign a visitor attendance sheet. Additionally, persons wishing to address council must complete a slip to speak and present it to the council, to the clerk of council prior to the meeting's starting. The slip to speak shall have name, address, and contact information of the person wishing to speak for the purpose of public record. And that came model, that comes modeled after what Gavin does.
I, I disagree with that, honestly, because I think, there's been times when I've came in here and I've heard other people's perspectives on stuff, and then I decided, like, you know what? I need to voice my concerns on this issue, and beforehand, I did not, so I really, I don't like that.
Or change their minds.
Or change their mind, yeah.
I mean, I know people who've came up here to speak and, and then felt anxious and, and didn't, and didn't feel comfortable enough. So I wouldn't want anyone to feel like, oh, no, I got to sign a sheet once, I give it to them, then I'm locked in.
Part, I think part of where that came from, just so you understand the history, both in talking with Todd and talking with Kirk on this is, um, we aren't verifying currently who did and who didn't sign the sheet, and it is a matter of public record of who spoke, and so that was the attempt to gather that information.
I don't mind the attendance sheet, that's fine, but I think maybe.
So how do we, how do we verify, you know, how does Kirk verify that he has the proper information from the person? Is where, where, where we're trying to accomplish.
When someone goes up to the podium.
Right, and a lot of times we've asked, and people will just start talking and don't give you that information.
We need to require that.
And that's when the council president says, excuse me.
That's why we're here to have a conversation. So tell me how you would like to, would you say, just take out the additionally?
Sign the sheet.
Yeah.
Take out that whole last portion, uh, but I think include, ask to arrive fifteen minutes so that they may sign a visitor attendance sheet. That includes name, address, and contact information.
Can you legally make someone sign a?
That was my next question.
Mr. Radliff?
Yes.
During the meeting, they would have to sign.
Yeah, well. Yeah, you, there's a public meeting, they can't, they can't come in, if you're saying. No, you, you can come in. Um, I, I, I think the signing sheets, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to look. Um, but the, the rules on speaking.
Right.
Are for this.
Right for you.
Yeah, the rules on speaking are for this.
As far as making them sign just to come in.
I'd have, I'd have to look. I, I, I don't know.
So maybe add a sentence to that, that's something to the effect of, uh, the council clerk will verify the, whatever information he needs prior to the person speaking. Cover that.
I don't have a problem with how they speak now. I, I could see myself sitting there and thinking, okay, you know, they just covered everything I was going to say.
No, I'm saying, he has to gather demographic information, your name, address.
I would say have the council president make sure if somebody starts talking, be like, please state your name and address.
Which we do relate pretty.
We, we, we don't do it well enough.
Yeah.
Well, some, a lot of times the news media wants to know who.
That's right.
Who spoke, and, and they don't know their exact names sometimes, and then when they're doing quotes, and she's got a question right now.
Well, I just wanted to say that you have covered a lot of council meetings throughout the county, and I can't remember if it was Gallyan, and Crestline still does it, but if you want to speak, you have to fill out a paper and give it to the council clerk, and then, um, and Crestline is a woman, so she, she calls them up and says their name, and then when they get to the podium, they say their name again and their address. But she calls them up when it's their turn, um, to speak, and then, um, the rest of us don't sign in, to just go to the meeting. You only fill out that paper if you want to speak.
You say Crestline does it that way?
Right, Rob? Aren't they still doing it that way? Okay, and I think Gallyan does too, if I'm not mistaken. I haven't been there.
Gallyan has the slips, and, and I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure if you even have to do it all at the beginning. There might be some people filling them out a little bit after the meeting has started and still handing them in. That's my question. Like Lisa said, if somebody says something, you want to say something about it.
Sorry, it's already been covered. That's how I would feel like.
Yeah, I don't think you would, you would be required to fill it out ahead of time. I think you could, if we were to do it that way, in my opinion, I think you could, I, I would go there and talk. Here's my hand. Whatever way works, I just think, you know, like we said, we want to make sure.
Or maybe a sheet even on the podium. When they come up, put your name and address down, then.
Issue against me. How's he know that? He can't see where he's at.
What do you have, I just can't.
How do we know that they didn't write somebody else's name on it?
Well, they could do that on any piece of paper. I mean, a lie is a lie. If they're in a lie, they're in a lie, but, I mean, if there was a sheet up here where they sign your name and address when you want to speak or something, I don't know.
Rob, do you have an opinion on that?
No, I mean, it's, the rules on who speaks and what they have to give are clearly within your discretion, so.
I was forwarded an email that showed how Columbus City Council does it, and they have the slips, and they have to write on the slip if they are wanting to speak on a certain subject. If some legislation is going to be voted on, they even have to put if they're in favor or not in favor of it. And then they also have to, they, Columbus City Council will not let more than three people speak for or against something, so if there's a huge group, they got to pick three of them amongst themselves.
I mean, uh.
I could have saved us an hour.
I think people deserve to be heard, you know, you heard that.
And I, I don't want to discourage anyone, because I want public.
I want to make sure we can gather the proper information as well, so.
So what if they decide after the meeting's over, they started, but then they change their minds, it's a second one. Or show up and, show up fifteen minutes before.
No, but he's, he brings a valid point of it. If somebody says something, says, I, I do speak, yeah, by all means, they need to be able to.
Yeah.
Whether they, whether they have to sign up, everybody on one page, or the, I don't care, it doesn't matter. I think we just have to make sure we're gathering that data.
If the page is outside and the complaint is, and I get it, because Kim needs information, you guys need information, if it's outside and people are walking past it, not signing it, if you put it here and you say, please sign your name and address before they speak, you're going to have whoever spoke.
And also, when they publicly say it.
Yes, it's on tape. I, I would never want people to feel like they're discouraged to address council, because I want to know what people think.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Todd, do you, do you use the tape to verify names and that sometimes?
I mean, is that helpful?
Oh, yeah, um, I use both. I need to use both. I mean, I don't want signs, and I don't want to just speak sign. We have an issue when, we need to have anyone who speaks come to the podium and give their name and address. We often have people in the audience who speak up. They don't give their name, they don't give their address. It doesn't get in the record because I don't know who they are, and there needs to be an official protocol where they come in, they can sign outside, they can sign here, wherever, but at some point, they need to give their name and address, otherwise they're not going to get in the record because I don't know who they are. So, um, that's the main.
Mr. Radliff, would that not be to the Sergeant of Arms, or would that go to the council president to hit the gavel and say, you can stop speaking, and when you're done, when the person's done, you can come up and contradict what they may have to say?
Yeah, it's just kind of.
On a Tuesday, you have it on a Thursday, it's whichever presiding member is in charge of that at the time. And I think the issue is this on both days. I, I, I'm saying whoever the chairman or council president is, whether it's committee or council.
So number two, as written, would not even apply to the committee meetings at all, because it says council meetings.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't have the slip for a committee meeting.
My question is, is it okay for Vicki to address, sitting here, tonight?
On a, on a Thursday, I, I don't have an issue with it. Historically, I don't know, before I got here, was that normal, or was, did, did it get any, make somebody have to stand up to? On a, on a Thursday night, I don't have an issue with it. Historically, I don't know, before I got here, was that normal or was, did, did it make somebody have to stand up to speak or? I don't know how it was more than three years ago. I don't have an issue hearing somebody speak from their chair on Thursday.
I think Kim does. I, I'm just saying, because she writes articles, that she may have an issue with maybe me saying, talking to her or speaking to Vicki and she's not knowing who they are.
With the chairperson on a Thursday.
A few weeks ago with this whole gun thing. There was like fifteen people that I couldn't quote because I have no clue.
Whoever's the chair of the committee, when somebody starts to speak, that's sitting in chair, that chairperson needs to say, hey, can you please state your name and address?
Okay.
That could be resolved by that.
That probably needs to be put in the.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Cause I didn't know.
On this issue, we can move on to the next issue. Um, I don't think we want to ever think this. I think, uh, we need to take it on a case by case, meeting by meeting basis, which usually means a formal, more so than these meetings are. I think it is incumbent upon the council president to make sure that everyone who wants to be on the record and speak, really anyone who wants to speak, period, should give their name and address and be at the podium. Now, Thursday, what's more informal like this, we're having back and forth with the audience. Um, many of us know who the people are and, uh, you know, I think they still need to state their name to the record because these records are kept in perpetuity. I think adding a, uh, attendance or a slip to speak and all that, like the other committees do in Columbus. Columbus has issues that we don't have because they have many, many more speakers and many, many more councils and many more issues than we do. Um, I think adding that makes this a little more complicated than it needs to be. I think we need to basically enforce those we have a little more diligently than we sometimes do.
Agreed.
That's just my personal opinion.
Uh, items number three, four, and five, there was no suggestion to make any changes to them?
I have a, something for right in there. Um, on Tuesday night, we had somebody come in and do a prayer. I'm fine with us doing a prayer, but is there any way we can put something in the ad hoc committee that the prayer is going to be positive and not taking down anybody in the community that person put down grants to?
So that question came up, uh, to me today as well. I was gonna address that here later on in this if we could.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so we do want to see what we can and can't agree about that, yeah. Vicki, do you have any questions on three, four, or five? Item six currently reads, all visitors shall address council from the podium provided in council chambers and no visitor would be permitted to speak from council, to council from his or her chair in the audience. Suggestion is to change it. All visitors shall address council from the podium provided in council chambers and no visitor will be permitted to speak from his or her chair in the audience. Those speaking, and again, it was to complete the slip so we can remove that, so actually item six would stay the same. Sorry, I didn't see that before I started reading. Item seven says persons other than council, members of council and city officers shall not be permitted to address council except upon introduction by the presiding officer. Each citizen must identify himself and his residential address for the purpose of public record. Um, it's suggested to remove that because it's all addressed elsewhere. So suggested to remove number seven. Number eight currently reads, each individual addressing council is asked to project his or her voice so the entire council can hear the speaker. Uh, suggested edit is each individual addressing council is asked to project his or her voice so the entire council can hear the speaker. Persons speaking to council will face the council and not speak to the audience.
I got a question though. Is that speaker on?
Only, I think, when Gary's here, if I.
Okay.
It's only when that.
I wonder, cause people, I don't hear it, so, okay.
When, when they're manning the camera.
Then that's.
It has improved considerably.
Yeah. Uh, it's suggested to remove number nine because it says all addressing council from the podium must face council. That's, was just included in the end of number eight, so suggested to remove number nine. Number ten says each visitor addressing council shall speak to council on one subject only. He or she cannot drift from one subject to another for a maximum of three minutes unless prior arrangements are made. Suggested edit that is, each visitor not already on the agenda shall speak to council on one subject only. He or she cannot drift from one subject to another for a maximum of three minutes. Speakers who have made prior arrangements with the council clerk to speak may be allotted more time at the discretion of the council president.
I do have a question on that one. Um, back when December thirteen, two thousand seventeen, when they were doing the rules and procedures for the council year of two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, the law director questioned number ten, this very one that you read. At that time, number ten said, each visitor addressing council shall speak to council on one subject only. He, she cannot drift from one subject to another, period. At that time, uh, Law Director Ratliff said that he understands the point there, but he's a little unsure that legally you can do that, meaning that you could say a person can only talk on one subject. He went on to say that usually people just want to come in and write. He went on to say that he feels that it should be content-based rather than time-based. And he suggested three minutes because I quote, he sees it all the time in other ordinances. At that time, he said, I suggest the following verbiage, each visitor addressing council, and this is a quote from the audio recording, each visitor addressing council, unless otherwise pre-approved or pre-arranged, shall be limited to three minutes. So the fact that the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen council rules, and you're looking at those now, talks about that council shall, or that citizens shall, or visitor addressing council shall speak on one subject only, that wasn't even supposed to be in there. Because the committee agreed with what he said, that each visitor addressing council, unless otherwise pre-approved, shall be limited to three minutes. So number one, you're looking at council rules that really are not accurate because that's not what the committee agreed to. Secondly, I have an issue with the three minutes and I had an issue back in two thousand eighteen when this was brought up. And I went so far as to contact twenty-one cities and posed the question. I said, our council is looking to now put a time limit on when, how long a citizen or a visitor can address council. Of those twenty-one responses, nine of them came back with allowing or telling me they allow five minutes. Six cities allow three minutes. Two cities allow an individual to speak for two minutes. Three cities have no time limit. One city has nothing in writing, but the council president can limit the time based on the topic and/or redundancy of the subject. Back in two thousand eighteen, I sent a letter to council along with a spreadsheet. I also sent an email to all the council members along with that spreadsheet identifying the city that I contacted, the individual that I contacted, what that individual had to say. And I mean, I have, you know, their emails, you know, to support all that. Um, unfortunately, even though I addressed or, you know, checked with other surrounding areas and as you can see, the majority was nine allowed five minutes, the ad hoc committee said, no, we're doing three minutes. However, then when the matter was brought up to council as a whole, well, let's see here, Truka moved and Myers seconded number ten to reflect five minutes. Truka Myers and vote, voted for five minutes. McKeever, Wireball, Sac, and Shop voted against the five minutes. I, I'm sitting here and yet I'm, I'm smiling to myself a little when I'm listening to certain council members say, well, you know, I checked with Gally and, or this is what Columbus does. So it's like, okay, I checked with one city, so this is what we should do. I checked with twenty-one municipalities, sent emails, got responses, gave that to council and we still have them saying, no, we're gonna stay with three minutes. We never had a time limit before. I really don't know why we need a time limit.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, we probably don't.
Count.
There are gonna be those times like, what, two weeks and four weeks ago where.
No, no, I don't think.
And we didn't time any of those people.
No, you did not. No, there, there was no, no.
I really feel like I might.
I think somebody might have spoken for fifteen minutes more.
Oh, I went through and I timed. I did not bring my sheets with who spoke and how long they spoke, but oh, yeah, we went over the three minutes. I had no problem with it.
Thoughts?
But.
Well, truth is, any of the. Well, all rules can be suspended by two-thirds of the majority of the council at any time.
Your thoughts on the time limit?
I agree. We still should keep it at three minutes when, and it's gotta be enforced. It wasn't enforced. That last meeting went before, the discussion on one subject was an hour and thirty-five minutes.
And I am so disappointed, an hour and forty-five minutes, but yet you tell the citizens, we want to hear from you. We want you to come and talk to us.
That's why I didn't tell anybody else.
I'm just saying, I'm not against them coming, but where all our time and theirs is valuable and to sit here and talk and say the same thing for more than three minutes. If you can't get your point across in three minutes, I'm sorry, but you need to be able to get it in three minutes. Okay, fine, we go five minutes. That's plenty of time. They don't need the time they did.
I'm, I'm going with five minutes unless they ask Kurt or somebody for more. If they're like in the middle of something and they have not been redundant, if they have not stated the same facts over or whatever and they're giving new information, obviously it's not just an opinion. You know, if it's, they're listing off facts to us and they've already asked the council president for more time and explain why and it's a valid reason why, like, they've got a big presentation they're doing. But I think that there should be a limit of some sort because otherwise we're gonna have the same people come up and say the same thing over and over and over again. Not necessarily, but there's, you know, that could happen.
Mr. Chair?
I wouldn't be opposed to us getting a little timer or something that they can see.
Well, did Todd, didn't you used to have a little timer up there when this first came about?
Mr. Chair, um, in the four years I've been on the council, um, we've had, um, a three-minute rule. We haven't had a three-minute rule. I have never seen a council president, either this one or the previous one, um, cut anyone off, uh, for any amount of time that they spoke. It has always been, regardless of what is in the rules, it has always been at the discretion on Tuesdays of the council president and on Thursdays of the committee chair to, uh, let that person speak. The problem when you do that though, is you give the potential for a council president or committee chair to have a personal animosity with who's speaking and they cut someone off better, like them or whatever. So I think you need to have something in writing, but if you have something in writing, then you need to enforce it.
Right.
I've never had a timer up here. I've never seen anyone with a timer up here. Um, that's just my perspective.
I'd be okay just wording it that we ask people to be succinct and get.
I believe that was said before eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah.
So what do you want?
Um, I know back when I sent my emails back in two thousand eighteen, um, Kevin asked me that very question, you know, what did I want? Personally, I don't feel there should be a time limit. I mean, we never had an issue before until it was brought up, you know, by the law director that we have a time limit.
Okay, fine.
But if there has to be a time limit and I told Kevin this, I feel the five minutes because it's supported by twenty-one, I, well, I should say the majority. Yeah, and it's like, I mean, you know, I'm just not pulling that out of my hat. I've got emails, you know.
How about we just get rid of the time limit, let the chair?
I'm thinking, how about you leave it at five minutes and, and then, because it's in there, the, the presiding member may a lot more time.
I agree with that.
May. You know, if I've got seventy-two people wanting to speak on the same matter, I may not want them a lot more time, but if I've got two people that want to make a point, I want to hear their point.
I agree with that. That way, like you said, just in case some of the council members has to be, having to speak more for or against an issue, they're not just being like, okay, that was enough time, that was enough time. I think we do need a lot of time and keep it down and.
And then on the other hand, you don't, don't want somebody to burst over.
That's an interesting, exactly.
And that's why I.
I think you're right. You gotta have a time. I think five minutes is, makes more sense as I felt two plus years ago.
Mark, as a son, you do not have to go with what everybody else does.
No, you don't.
And that's why I felt three minutes was sufficient when we had, when we had a lot of crowd. But it's up to the council president during council meetings. I'm not the chair at that time. When I'm the chair of finance and the chair of planning, yes, I can hold it to that. So I understand, I got your email, I read your information, I got the documentation, I still have it. I saw what you did. It was good. I thank you for that. But we don't have to go with what twenty-one cities do. I thought three minutes was sufficient. Like I said, if you can't say it in three minutes, I'm sorry, I, I'll even give you five. Fine, we'll go with five.
Fine.
But a lot of people gotta get this through, you know, some people can ramble on for a long time. It doesn't matter what time. They're going, there's gonna be people who, well, I need ten minutes.
Well, if you call ahead and get put on the agenda, you're our a lot of more time.
And we do that and that's usually for those who are coming to explain a new service that they're trying to get us to purchase or, uh, like our engineer or those four, those people who come for that, yes, we do allow them more time because of their information they're trying to give us. And I'm not saying we're trying to let the citizens to any time. We just need them to get to, get to the heart of the matter. That's all I'm saying.
So did I hear correctly that Mr. McKeever stated that as a committee chair, he can hold, I guess I thought this three minutes was just for council meetings. But is this three, are you saying this three minutes is for committee meetings?
So I always understood it to be at council meetings as well.
Yes, okay, but that's not what I believe was just stated.
It doesn't specify.
Doesn't specify, but as a chair, I can stop. I can say, okay, you said your point, you are done. Unless you have something else to say, other than what you just discussed, I can say, that is enough. You haven't, you haven't given me any new information. If you can't present any new information, please sit down and let the others speak. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Somebody can keep saying the same thing over and over and they're not giving any new information. We don't have time to sit here and argue over somebody's redundancies. Get to the point, say what you need and I'll give, if you have something to counter, that's somebody who opposes you, fine, I will let you speak again. But you gotta have something more, more information or new information or a different aspect to that information.
So what are we saying that number ten's going to state now?
Each visitor not already on the agenda shall speak to council on one subject only. He or she cannot drift from one subject to another for a maximum of five minutes. Speakers who have made prior arrangements with the council clerk to speak may be allotted more time at the discretion of the council president.
So you're going to leave in that they shall speak to council on one subject only, when in fact that wasn't even, shouldn't even be in.
Why we're discussing it. I was just getting ready. I was waiting for you guys to finish your chat. I'm gonna ask these two their thoughts on that matter. So Candy?
Um, as long as they're, they're allowed to speak again. So let's say we've got four different subjects going on and the person can get up and speak for five minutes about, they want to talk about the reservoir. Um, let's say they want to talk about another aspect. Great, I'm glad they're very devoted to the community and they want to speak about another subject.
I kinda thought the same thing because I may want to talk to you about two things. I don't want to be told like, oh, I gotta pick which one. But I think maybe say eleven of five minutes on that topic.
Yeah.
So if they got four topics, can they speak for twenty minutes?
Yeah, I, I think if it's four topics that we're discussing, I, I, I think they have that right. You agree?
Wow, she's happy.
Number eleven, uh, no reason to change from the people I spoke with. Number twelve, said time shall be allotted to each speaker addressing council at the discretion of the council president. That would just suggest to be removed because we just addressed number ten. Um, number thirteen stays the same. Number fourteen, we thought was redundant. Number fourteen, we thought was redundant, could be removed. It says all speakers shall comply with the council rules. That's why they're the council rules. Any questions on that first portion called citizen participation that we didn't already hit on? Nikki, did you have anything else in that section? Candy?
No, we're still coming back to.
Yep, Mark. Um, the next section is council participation, section B. Uh, number one would stay the same. Number two says no council member or any other designated city official seated within the council chamber railing is permitted to have any food or drink on the council tables while conducting business for the city, with the exception of the clerk of council who's permitted to have one or more. Suggestion is made to change that to no council member or any other designated city official seated within the council chamber railing is permitted to have any food on the council tables while conducting business for the city. Council members and city officers will silence all electronic devices. So essentially it's allowing drink. Especially if we're talking for any length of time. You know, you may want to cleanse your parched voice. The question was brought up of decorum. Is that, is that decorum or not? And I don't know.
Yeah, I've seen him have food over a carion, so that's before drink only.
What's the depths? You know, don't you have like a underneath your camp?
I can't fit this pot over there. I put it on the floor, which I have done in the past.
Which is usually where I keep my stuff down here, but.
But I've always, always. Nervous to even take a drink on Tuesdays in years past.
I don't have any problem with drinks sitting on the table.
Cable back is perfect.
It's not a margarita.
We don't, we have a sign that says good drinks.
Yeah, even though we don't follow that.
Yeah.
So the suggestion was to just essentially allow for drink. Um, item number three, four, and five are suggested to be left alone. Item number six says no member of council or city officer may filibuster. We're suggesting basically to, uh, merge that with number seven, which said council members or city officers shall speak in any subject matter on a succinct manner. So combining those two together to say council members and/or city officers shall speak on any subject matter on a succinct manner and may not at no time filibuster. Or may, at may, at no time filibuster. So it's just essentially combined, six and seven. Number eight stated no members of council or any other designated city official seated within the railing of council chambers shall leave council chambers during session without leave being granted by the president. It's suggested to remove that completely because it's addressed to codified ordinance one eleven point ten, which also says the same thing. So there's no reason to have it in there too at the times. Mainly because if somebody wants to change it down the road, they only changed one of the two, then we're going, we had some other things in here that had two different rules.
So if I need to leave early, not that I do, but I'm, for future reference, because I don't know, I just need to ask Kurt, thank Kurt, I have a meeting.
On a, on a Tuesday, you would ask him. If it's on a Thursday, you would ask who? Or you could ask during. And whomever, if it's during this committee, you know, if I'm the chair, you would ask me. You know, if you just need to step out, you just need to get permission from the presiding member.
I think that's in the ordinance too.
It is one eleven point ten, which is why we suggest removing it from the rules. Number nine, it's suggested to leave as is. Number ten states a majority of a four-member council committee shall be present to conduct business at a committee meeting. It's suggested to remove that because we're going to address it in another portion here, I just have to find it. Where it basically merges the two together for committees and. I believe it's in the ordinance portion where it'll say, what is, what constitutes a quorum, both for a committee and a council. So it's suggested to remove from the rules portion that was suggested in the ordinance.
Oh, ordinance one 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 dot oh eight.
Yes, it's right here in front of me. Thanks Lisa. Uh, suggested to reword is there. I'll, I'll jump ahead while we're on that to, to one eleven point oh eight to reword that. Four members of council constitute a quorum, while three members of a standing committee constitute a quorum as a committee. So back up where we were at the rules that would suggest removing number ten. Eleven and twelve stay the same with no change, and then suggested adding the number thirteen. Should any conflict arising from these rules, as they may, from time to time differ from Besire's codified ordinance, section one eleven, the codified ordinance will always prevail. In the event that we miss something, it is worded two different ways, the ordinance will be the official rule. Any questions, suggestions, concerns on that topic of council participation? Mr. Sean, Mr. Sean? Candy? All right, moving on to miscellaneous. This is where I, and it's not on here because the subject came up today, but the subject of, uh, when we have invocation. Mr. Ratliff, do you have an opinion on what we can and can't? I don't want to censor invocation, but is there a way that we can produce something that would be a guideline and say you would like to try to keep it this, 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 or this? I, it's not on the paper. This, this, you may walk in before we have this conversation.
Positive prayer, positive prayer, that's not all inclusive to everybody, that's not putting down.
The invocation from Tuesday was a little bit abrasive.
Um, kids, there, there, the Supreme Court from two thousand fourteen, and then there's some guidelines that different agencies and state agencies and federal agencies have issued based on that. I, I can pull you some language that kind of says, and, and it basically says positive. Yeah, positive prayer.
Yeah, because we're here to, for like everybody in the community, and I needed to see that on Tuesday. That really, really disappointed me.
I'll pull, I'll pull some of the, the guidance language that, that kind of implements a Supreme Court decision.
Whether that would be a, a one number under miscellaneous or whether that would be something not inside these rules that could be a, a document prepared outside of these rules. I don't know with how that fits, which way's better, but you know, to have a suggested format might be. So then moving on with the rest of the miscellaneous, um, number one says all visitors, council persons, and the administration are asked to silence all electronic devices. We're suggesting remove that because we've already addressed it both in the visitors and in the council person sections. Number two says all communications, reports, and minutes from members of the council shall be submitted in electronic format. Microsoft worded the council clerk along with the signing sheets and requests for legislations by noon on Monday following the joint regular committee meetings. That's not how we do it anymore. Um, so Todd helped me reword that one and suggested it says all requests for legislation for members of council shall be submitted to the council clerk by noon on Monday following the joint regular committee meetings. So we, uh, we aren't responsible for typing up our own things anymore like we used to have to. So change it, put it that, those back on the council clerk. Number three says all council committee chairpersons are responsible for their own committee meetings. If a meeting is electronically recorded, the recordings shall be given to council clerk with date and committee name noted. All recordings shall be retained by the council clerk office for three months and then destroyed. Suggesting changing that to the council clerk is responsible for drafting committee minutes. If a meeting is electronically recorded, the recordings shall be made by the council clerk with date and committee name noted. Records will be maintained in accordance with the City Besire's records retention policy. Questions on that one?
What is that retention policy?
It says three months or electronic. And Todd has advised me that he has not destroyed anything.
I have recordings going back, uh, at least ten years. Um, I haven't got rid of them. I have three for them. As long as I have three for them, I don't see a reason to throw them out. Um, the retention policy is three months, but.
The way that retention policy works, you can keep them in excess of it. There's been a law that says you can. But it technically we can throw something out at the three-month mark and, you know, it's that's it. I, I'd like to see it extended. I don't see why it needs to be that short. It's probably maybe that short back when we had actual real, real tapes.
Yeah.
So.
There is no room to keep.
Yeah, but with the electronic ways you can keep documents now, it's basically unlimited. We keep something for twenty years and it's not, not hurt.
Part of why I suggested, uh, address it with the records retention policy is with the thought that most likely that's going to get changed.
It gets changed periodically, yeah.
Yeah.
But we got to have a record or a record commission meeting in order to change that.
And I guess I'm not too concerned now about the fact where it says that all recordings shall be retained for three months and then be destroyed. Of course, I mean, you know, you're saying the public records or the records retention, which you're saying is three months. Because if I'm understanding correctly, the audio recordings are now both the committee meetings and the council meetings are being placed on I don't know how to call it, minutes on demand.
Yeah. I, I have no intention of removing them from there at three months. I'd like to see them stay
Yes.
for like at least ten years or something. Maybe even longer.
I just didn't want to see a length of time mentioned in these rules when that can be changed elsewhere and then we forget to come back and change this. That was my intention with that.
And that's the intention that you folks have as far as on the minutes on demand or the docuware. You're going to be placing those audio recordings of both council meetings and committee meetings.
Yeah, those audio recordings had been kept on file in clerk's office. Like Todd just said, he's got them ten years old. I said, well, why can't we just put them on there because it's there? And then you won't have to send an email request to them.
Hey, that's one of the things I put on there, and I put in the email. You know, if you do this stuff, you can reduce the number of public records requests.
I, I agree. I'd like to see more stuff on there too, and I, I'd like to see the other departments in the city put stuff on there. But I, I think they'll control those other departments.
Because you know, when that whole docuware, I know I may be getting off, but that whole docuware issue back when I worked for the city, when, you know, that was decided that, you know, they wanted to have all that. It was supposed to be everybody putting stuff on there, not just a council.
Well, I, I had a discussion with Landon and I showed him how to use it, and he's, he's going to try and get more stuff from his zoning office in there.
All right, moving on to miscellaneous. Items four, five, six, seven, and eight are suggested to be left alone. Nikki, any concern with any of those? Number nine and ten, I'm going to read both of those. It's been suggested to remove both of those. Number nine, the president pro tem and the clerk of council shall be elected by a two-thirds vote if council is determined by Ohio Board of Vice Code seven thirty-one point oh four. It's already the law, doesn't need to be mentioned here. Uh, number ten says council rules may be amended or altered or new rules adopted at any regular meeting of council or reported by proper committee to which the subject has been previously referred by the vote of the majority of all members elected to council. It's been suggested to remove that because we're going to address that here in one sec, in number twelve. So I'll get to that in just a second. Number eleven, it's suggested to leave alone. Number twelve currently says rules of procedure of council of the City Besire's operating under a statutory form of government and formally adopted by the Besire's city codified ordinance do not continue from term to term, but must be readopted by succeeding councils. It's been suggested to change that to rules of procedure of council of the City Besire's operating under a statutory form of government and formally adopted by the Besire's city codified ordinance shall continue from term to term unless modified, amended, or altered by the vote of a majority of all members elected to council. Rules must be readopted retroactively to the start of a new council term whenever they remain the same or are modified, amended, or altered. What we're attempting to do essentially is, we have the rules right now. They expire on December thirty-first. This would give us, at least a set of rules to operate under. If we felt the need to change it, like we're doing now, so be it, and we have the right and duty to do that. But that would, um, essentially make sure the rules are in place for the new council at the start of the term until they retroactively go back and change them.
Because right now you're operating under new rules.
Yeah.
You are.
It's a free draw.
Yeah.
I believe for the law director as well. Um, on your suggested amendment to number twelve, how does that last sentence differ from what we're reading right now?
That, that's what I was going to say was if you, if the rules are going to stay in place perpetually unless changed, the last sentence says that you still have to readopt them every time.
All right, well, that came from my conversation with you, and the way I was trying to say was if you readopt them, they must be retroactive. Which is, I thought, what you told me.
I don't know that that's what I meant to tell you. I, I think if, if you're.
You're the lawyer.
So they say, um, if, if you have that first section where they're, where you're saying that they're, they're staying in place perpetually um, unless modified, changed, or, then I don't know that you need to readopt them.
I, I'm fine with that. I, I questioned that when you told me that, but again, I don't have any reason I thought that.
So I was just looking at it in, in writing, and I, I think it's the same thing.
I, when I looked over this earlier today, I actually underlined that sentence and I put a question mark.
Yeah.
So I'm, I think we just dragged that last sentence. But essentially that still means that the rules are going to carry over to the next term until such time they want to change them. All right. Um, number thirteen currently says all council rules shall be on file in the clerk of council office. Suggested to change it to all council rules shall be on file in the clerk of council office as well as published on the City Besire's website. Because we already are doing that. Anyway, just brings us up to times. All right, any questions under the miscellaneous? Candy? Moving on to the codified ordinance, uh, suggested changes. Um, I, I did not leave it left alone here. I did not even mark that down, so I'm going to re, go through what was suggested to change. If I skip over one, this is where I wanted you to stop me.
Can I ask one question before you start?
Am I going to tell you now? We don't have any rules right now. Go ahead.
I printed off from the docuware program the what Todd sent to you folks, the council packets. Have, have you received any changes to what you originally received? Because I'm not sure if what you got is current.
From when we got them emailed to us earlier this week? Or, or what do you, I don't know.
Okay, this was, these were emailed back on January twenty-third, twenty twenty, um, committee referrals. That packet that had the, um, that what, had what we just went over.
Yes, that's where I printed this from.
That's where you printed that from?
Yes.
Okay, then if we can, take a look at what you received. And I printed that off. Then I went to the codified ordinances, which are on our city website, and printed off chapter one one one. And that does not match up with what you were provided.
Okay.
So, and just bear with me here if you will. Check on the sheet that you have for one 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 and tell me, and I mean, you shouldn't have it because it's not online. Have one 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 point one four. Do you have one 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 point one five? And then if you look at one one point two O, notice of meetings that in the second page, that had to do with an ordinance that was passed in nineteen seventy-five. That was since redone. Let's see, one 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 point two O. That was done, that was, uh, an ordinance passed in two thousand fifteen. So I, I, you're looking at.
Old stuff.
Yeah.
So with those ones you just mentioned, did you have any issues that you would like us to address in those?
Yes.
So can we do those now?
Sure.
Since.
So I guess, you know, again. So I guess, you know, again, you're missing 111.14 and 111.15. I'm fine with what these say.
What are the titles for those two?
Oh, 111.14 is committee reports on ordinances and resolutions.
Is that blank here or does it kind of say?
No, this is, these are the codified ordinances that I have on file, and she's right, 111.14 and 115 are not in here, but I can feel like the page numbers, the page numbers aren't sequential. So I don't know what it says on mine, but the records that I have in my office is what you all have right here. These ordinances have been missing for a while. I can't say.
And you said, pardon, you said 2015?
2015, watch.
The year for the 111.20.
Yes, the 111.20.
Because on 18B it says past 4/7/15.
Yes, let me continue on. Under 111.20, look at your page that is number 17. Okay, down at the bottom, 111.20, that is not current, and that second page is not current.
So specifically, what is it that...
I mean...
I get where you're at. Is there something that needs to be addressed, that needs changed, or is it stuff that needs are current?
Well, I guess, I'm sitting here thinking you've gone through these, but what you've gone through, you haven't gone through correct information.
Yeah. You're missing a piece, and are these controlled documents?
Excuse me?
Like are they controlled documents where there's to be no changes made and they're kept on file?
Yeah, that's the law.
You're not to be bothered copies, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, you will find it under the codified ordinances.
Do they have a controlled document number so that they know, so that we know they're the most updated version, I guess is what I'm asking. Like, do controlled documents have like a CD number, like a most revised number? Does that make sense?
Well, that's why it says the year at the bottom, 2008.
Yeah, well, it's 2008.
Oh, 2008.
This one says 2008, that's why I'm asking.
What I think has happened, I mean, I don't know, but, you know, having worked with the law director, I mean, when the codified ordinances were updated, our office, as other offices, would be given sheets from, at that time it was Walter Green, and it would be sheets that we needed to replace into our codified ordinance book, and it would say, okay, here's page three, put that in, remove page five. You had to be careful, and I have a feeling that when...
Do you see what I'm saying?
That wasn't done.
But this is 12 years ago.
No, I mean, Walter Green, Walter Green, and they go through this for Fine Truth Club every September and give us the new pages, and we put the new pages in. This, these ordinances, I don't know, we're talking about 2008, 2017? We haven't addressed these ordinances in my time here. I don't know what else to do.
Well, I want to see the rest of these changed.
But I'll return to Walter Green and say they're not in the file.
Yes, not online.
Yeah, yeah, correctly.
But the interesting thing is, what Todd's pointing out is the page numbers can be printed originally, are sequential.
So Walter Green apparently didn't give us the right information.
Thanks for bringing your attention.
Now, with the ones that we're missing, Vicki, is there anything that you think we need to address, and we're gonna have to obviously read them to think about that for ourselves, but I'm asking you initially, is there things that need addressed in those in point 14 or point 15?
No, 111.1, no, the 14 and 15, no, I don't have any issues.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no.
All right, so I'm gonna go back and go through 111.08. We already read through, it states what the quorum would be for a council and for a committee. 111.10 is permission required for leaving session, which we also said that we were gonna take out because it's addressed there. 111.18 is the order of business. It currently says, at all meetings of council, business shall be transacted as fast as possible in the following suggested order. We've added a couple of things. So the new order, the new suggestion at this point is, call council order, invocation and pledge allegiance. I typed it up, pledge allegiance first, but I had somebody point out to me that invocation should come before the pledge. And again, this is suggested, so it can be deviated from, but the call to order, the invocation, the pledge, roll call, and then here's a change, approval of previous council minutes, individual transcripts having been delivered to council members by clerk prior meeting time, and then approval of public hearing or other minutes, individual transcripts having been delivered to council members by clerk prior meeting time, and granting permission of visitors to speak, reading of communications and petitions, and then report of standing committees, and this is where we have to have a discussion. The topic of whether or not to read the committee reports in their entirety has been debated, we need to address that now. You know, I think I understand, Mr. President, where you were coming from, wanting to kind of speed up the meetings a little bit, but I talked to Dan Wireball today out in public and listened to his take on it, having been somebody who sat here and then has more recently sat out there. He said, you know, when we sit up here, we already have them, so it makes sense to us if we don't read all the way through. But to somebody like him who may not have been at the previous meeting come then, he was lost. And he said, I would have appreciated hearing on that. He said, he admitted, he said, you know, a lot of times he had to read through the finance ones, and he was tired when he's done reading them. But he made the point, and I kind of agree with him, that, you know, to somebody who's sitting out there, I think they might need to hear what we're talking about to be brought up to speed.
That's why I ad-libbed it and tried to say in a short statement what we passed or discussed.
I agree with you, at least give a summary of what was all over.
I kind of followed yours because you did that the first time, so.
You guys did that tonight. I thought that was fun.
Yeah, we're talking about a council meeting when we give the reports of the committees. And I did the same thing Tuesday night, I looked at my copies.
Okay, so when you go to the council meeting and you're gonna go over the ad hoc committee, are you gonna have like two and a half hours of what we just did?
No, the way that Todd types them up, it'll take me four minutes to read them. And I think, I guess, that's where I'm at, I'd rather continue to read them.
This will be more than four minutes.
I may request you to read, I think I hear a lot of...
What about when we approve, when the committees' minutes get approved? Shouldn't that be at those committee meetings, next time those committees meet?
I feel that way, yeah, and I don't know, Rob, if you've got an opinion, but if this ad hoc committee wants to approve the minutes that are gonna come out of this ad hoc committee, I think it should be the four members of this ad hoc committee that are voting to approve it, not all seven council members.
I think you're right.
And that's always been my concern with it, when you're reading the minutes. On next Tuesday, when you're reading the minutes from this committee meeting, this committee has never read and approved those minutes. You're reading into the record minutes that the committee hasn't read and approved.
And we've not actually traditionally went back and approved them by that committee.
And you could have two people missing from that council meeting that were on those committees, but yet the majority of council approves it, and so that the actual committee wasn't the ones that approved this.
Yeah, but if you had two people missing, you shouldn't have had a meeting to begin with, you didn't have a quorum.
A regular council meeting.
A regular council, excuse me.
So I do think that, I agree, the first point of that is, I'd like to approve these at the next committee meeting, not at a council meeting. With that said, then you'd have to wait two council meetings to read them in record.
Yeah, that's the problem.
And at that point, we're way behind.
Well, and it's complicated by the fact that we do so much as emergency legislation. And so the need to read them at that next meeting is because everything that they're talking about is being passed as an emergency, so that's why you gotta get that read right away. But, you know, they may be accurate, they may be not. Usually there's some minor discrepancy, we fix it here, but the reality of it is, is the committee that produces that never goes back to that committee, they review it and approve it, and it gets read here, and I understand the necessity because we're doing these on emergency all the time.
There's a question then, can we, if, let's assume that we're gonna continue to read the minutes, which we haven't determined yet, but if we continue to read the minutes, can we read the minutes on the Tuesday minute meeting, and then on the following Thursday, that committee, because that's when the committees meet, those committees approve those minutes? The problem with that is, all committees don't necessarily read them Thursday.
Well, and the other problem with that is, you're reading into the record something that may not be accurate, so now you're gonna have a council meeting, two meetings down that's gonna...
Yeah, you're gonna have notes for money, too.
Yeah, it kind of gets into a perpetual.
I suppose, like, we, I talk out loud here, I may be wrong, but doing what we just did Tuesday night by giving a verbal report as you read through, kind of verbally stating what we've been discussing, and then having that committee approve it then two days later.
Yes.
But here's the issue with what, if service committee doesn't meet on that following Thursday, we can say nothing on day two?
Well, now they will have something on day two, if they have to.
They have to get together just...
They may have to call themselves to order to approve their minutes and then be done.
Well, it wouldn't matter if they didn't approve them until the next meeting because they're not being read, they're just, you know, like sometimes traffic commission or other things, you know, they not be until the next meeting.
So whatever they need again, they can approve the minutes.
Yeah, the issue, one issue that I see with doing that is if you are reading that summary, at the Tuesday council meeting, if you're, if Mr. McKeeber's giving a summary of what his committee said, that's gonna have to be noted in the minutes for that meeting.
And then when will the actual approved minutes, will they then be put in a council meeting minutes?
I think they should be, I think they should be online as well.
Not until they're approved.
Right, by that committee.
Correct.
I mean, they're not gonna be in a regular meeting minutes anyway, they're gonna be there.
Okay, instead of us perpetuating it on to a month away, when we have our meet now two weeks, we have our council meeting, can we not just, you correct me if I'm wrong, as if I, when I read finance and when I read Platten, and I'll read it, the Platten committee will vote the four, as long as we have a quorum here, we vote yes, that is correct, or correct any statement, and done, and then it goes on to the legislation.
Well, when you do that, you're essentially having a committee meeting in the midst of that.
Actually, we're already the call to order at the council.
Well, then you would have to call that to order if it's, if it's a regular meeting, that you're gonna do it every two weeks, you have to post the regular meeting, or has to be published as a regular meeting, or if it's gonna be a special, it's gonna be posted, and purposes just for doing that, I think, running the...
Then how did we get away with this, that we've been doing it the wrong way? Is it wrong what we were doing?
I've always had the opinion that the committee is not approving its minutes. I mean, I'd say that for some time.
So if we, if we read them at the next committee meeting for approval, and vote as a committee to approve them, and then they get put on the website, does that take care of your concern with them, Vicki?
You're not gonna, you're not gonna read them at a council meeting.
Well, we could then after, but a lot of times, it may, it may or may not be a moot point if it's already been, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Since this got brought up here in the last month, I've started to pay attention to other councils or boards and things, and it's, we, most of them do not read the minutes from their committees at the regular council meetings. So I feel that, and I've had some people, like, in the media say, oh my God, this is just, this takes up too much time, they don't, if the media doesn't want it, the media's the ones that, they should be crucifying us for stuff.
We cover all the council or the committee meetings, so if somebody wants to know what happened, isn't reading their articles? And then, isn't the video, aren't you posting videos of all the meetings?
There's like three different ways people can see all this stuff.
Yeah, if they want to know what happened at the last committee meeting, it's very easy.
As long as someone can figure out where they're gonna put it, because that was my whole thing, we're putting meetings here and cancellations here, and we're not consistent, and citizens...
Well, I would like to know where the videos are gonna be, because it doesn't look like the city has a video.
I know, me, too, because I shared them on my page.
And now I don't know where they are.
All right, so for this specific issue, what's the right fix? Rob, you believe that we need to, at the next committee meeting, approve those minutes, correct?
Yeah, I, I believe that whatever board, whatever entity generates minutes should approve those old minutes.
And then what happens to them? Do they go to the next council meeting to be read, or are they just simply made available online?
If you guys want to read them at a council meeting, that's up to you, but they definitely would be online.
Yeah, I think the issue is whether they're going to be officially approved. Now, the minutes from tonight are still gonna be in the minutes, oh, I'm sorry, going back. Every, the minutes for every Tuesday's meetings contain the minutes from the Thursday prior, and that will continue to be the case. That's not gonna change, my job hasn't changed, but your job is the one that we're talking about changing, whether you're going to prove it on this night or the next night or whatever night. So the minutes are still gonna be...
It's a matter of them being read.
They're still gonna be on the agenda on Tuesdays, they're still gonna be part of that agenda, they can be reported out, they can be discussed, they're still gonna be in the minutes that I publish for every Tuesday minute, every Tuesday meeting, the Thursday prior, but that's not gonna change. The issue is when you approve those minutes, they're gonna be as visible now as they happen, it's just when you, when you officially approve.
I like that, and I do think that we need to actually approve them at the next committee meeting, I think that's important. So, and then the rest of the...
But what are you reading? What are you reading, like, next, when you have your next council meeting? What are you gonna read from the ad hoc committee?
Well, what we've done the last three weeks is, each of us, the chaired committee had the option to either say, I have no report, or to give a rundown of what was in there, and it was a little bit different.
Because remember, as citizens, we have the opportunity then to ask any questions about the read.
Can we read them?
Citizens can get those, they're all on the website.
Can we read them and specify that these are not yet approved by the committee? Can there be a disclaimer maybe?
They say draft on, okay.
I'm saying, while we read them, can we make a verbal disclaimer? So when you ask for reports of state in the committees, can you add a sentence in there and say, these are not yet approved by each committee?
That can be easily done, I can put draft on every committee that gets published in the form, in terms of them approved.
But then how can you prepare legislation? Because legislation is supposed to be prepared based on the request form that you fill out. And that request form is supposed to follow the, what was discussed at the committee meetings. So...
If it doesn't, then that's where that legislation is presented for its first reading, that's where I suppose we would speak up and say, no, that's not what we asked for.
That's why we're not, we're trying to change our process of doing 85% of our legislation, or 90% of our legislation as emergency, and change it to first, second, and third readings.
So you are working on doing that?
Oh, yeah, we've done immensely better than that. Pretty much finance stuff is the only stuff we're really shooting through as an emergency.
Emergency, right?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you all know, I mean, I've sent you the emails, we've got an audio recording I'm listening to, I'm looking at the minutes that were prepared based on that audio recording, they absolutely do not match up. Legislation is prepared, I bring to the attention that, hey, this, you know, this stuff isn't right, then the legislation that was put online in the council packet, which us citizens would see, turns out to not be the legislation in that was presented the night of council and approved, and it's like, no big deal, I know the minutes don't say this, but hey, this is what we're doing for legislation, I mean... I mean, I've always had a bone of contention, the minutes are not prepared accurately.
Well, how, how about this? How about, can we maybe table this and do some more research or something?
We can. My goal is to try to get through as much as we can, cause we don't have any rules right now.
Well, can we approve the, the rules, rules part with the ordinance, ordinance part? Maybe table that aside?
Right, but the rules are not legislative, uh, legislatively, uh, that. The codified ordinances I go into now require much more work. I, I, I agree with the council president. The ordinance we've gone through, made the changes we wanna make and, uh, you know, where the codified is, there isn't much, much of a more detailed process.
Cause that's gotta be posted and stuff when you pass the codified. Right, it's gotta go through three readings and then actually, but I, I, I think this, this other stuff can be approved in one meeting, right?
It must also have to be by the normal council.
Well, that's gonna be happened.
And the same issue that we have with one-one-one, where you were provided, not accurate.
Right.
It's the same with one-one-three.
Okay. Well, then I suppose we have no choice other than to stop now and, uh, be happy with what we've done with the rules and then we're gonna have to meet again to go through the ordinances.
You can get a approval of these.
Get that. All right, uh, Mark or Andy, I would entertain a motion to approve the rules of council and read and amend it this evening.
Rules, are we, so we're still?
We're gonna, we're gonna table the codified ordinance until we get the most up-to-date ones where we can, and I will go through them again and then speak to the people I spoke to in the past to make sure that they've been prepared similar suggestions for us. So first, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the rules as read and amended this evening.
I have to say first, obviously we are gonna deal with the issue of people not coming in and pushing, I, I don't know, that's my, that's just my biggest thing, the rules, if there is any-
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Rob Ford read the Supreme Court rule and-
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a number of, uh-
Cause I believe, absolutely believe in freedom of speech, but I don't think that hate speech deserves to be, that is literally pick to do the prayer is representing council. I feel like it's representing our city and I feel that we need to make sure that we're not-
Yeah, there's been a number of public cases since that Supreme Court case about what is, you know, taken on to the, to the office.
Okay, so as long as I'm willing to pass this, as long as we know that's an issue that we are gonna work on.
Yeah, he's gonna investigate whether that belongs in this document or I think it could be a single document, it'd be fine for me.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So I'll entertain a motion.
A motion, motion.
I have a first one, I have a second, I have a review all ready to say aye. Post citizen saying? All right, that's what I wish, vote, we will table the codified ordinance section until we can have, uh, additional resources given. Do we, committee people, do we want to wait two weeks to do this, or do we wanna try to meet sooner or later?
No, to not to.
I'm fine with being a saver. I, I am, it's just, it's, it's up to you. So I would-
Other days in the week work better.
As I pointed out two weeks ago, I, for eight weeks, I'm going to Indiana for grandkids to help with them. I leave on a Monday, I come home on a Thursday.
So if we could look at a Thursday night or a Friday?
That would be fine.
All right, so with that being said.
Then is it you're wanting to do it before the next?
I think, I'd like to just get, get as much done as we can. I don't wanna keep perpetually pushing this off. Um, Thursday the twenty-seventh.
Six, seven, I, I can't do it. I have an event. I have to be gallium or six, seven.
And I guess it'll be on the fifth at our next, uh, committee.
Yeah, or if you try, huh?
Is what it is? All right, then I will recess this ad hoc committee.
Oh.
At eight-thirty-eight PM, is there any public participation? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees.